Has on an annual basis to partner with our local conservation.
I'm sorry, just getting word from the tech team.
We had a bit of an audio issue. It wasn't going to the stream, but it's good now.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, thanks.
Okay. So this is our annual conservation futures program briefing, and this is the exciting opportunity the county has on a year-to-year basis to partner with our conservation organizations to achieve shared goals around salmon recovery, cultural resource preservation, farmland protection. I am joined here today by, well, you will be the interim community planning manager, Andrew Defobus. In addition to being the fearless leader of the shoreline master program, he has also been a consistent and committed conservation futures program leader for the last 10 years. So Andy, take it away.
Great. Go ahead and launch presentation. Coming up, good morning, commissioners and county managers. I'm Andrew Defobus, senior planner with community planning and stepping into the interim community planning manager role. I'm here today to provide a briefing on this year's conservation futures applications. Changing in a minute. Okay, there we go. So Conservation Futures is a program for the conservation of a variety of lands with some, which was authorized by the state legislature back in the early 1970s. So some examples of funded projects through the county have been agricultural lands, marine shorelines, wetlands, recreational properties, things like that. Land conservation is funded by a tax levy that the county has been collecting since around 1990. The money is used to purchase land or conservation easements on land. The tax rate paid by taxpayers varies from year to year. In 2024, it was about 2.7 cents per $1,000 assessed value. And Conservation Futures funds allocations are made by the Board of County Commissioners. For the past several years, the amount available for new projects has been $500,000 per year. So some quick statistics for you. Since the program's inception, approximately 53 projects have been funded by the Board of County Commissioners totaling about $19.5 million. This funding represents support of conservation of 5,600 acres on the ground. We also have two projects that were awarded by funds by the Board in recent years that have not yet closed. That's about $900,000 in funding, and when completed would add another 235 acres to the list of lands that were protected using Conservation Futures funds.
Commissioner Fornier, I know you really like maps. We are actually working on a new map layer that will show where all these projects are on the ground. So in addition to stats, you'll be able to see the impact.
Yeah. Yes. So the program operates like an annual grant program. Each year, applications are due by March 1, and they must be sponsored by an entity that's eligible to receive Conservation Futures funds under state law. This is typically a land trust or a city government, but the county can also expend those funds directly. There's a ranking committee, volunteers that reviews applications and makes recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. It's made up of county advisory board members and agency technical representatives. So briefly, I'll run through that list. We've got representatives from the Thurston County Agriculture Advisory Committee, Storm and Surface Water Advisory Board, Historic Commission. We borrow parks representation from other jurisdictions if they've got volunteers available. And then on the agency side, State Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, Thurston Conservation District, and then wildlife agencies such as U.S. Fish and Wildlife or State Department of Fish and Wildlife. And then we get real estate representation as well. Ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners listens to the recommendations of the committee, and they select which projects to fund and make all the funding decisions. So these are the ranking criteria here that were established by the Board and are used by the ranking committee to review and score the applications. Committee members judge how well a project fits in with these criterias and then assign numerical scores. Specifically, they're looking at how well the project fits into the overall Conservation Futures program and its objectives and goals. They consider how time-sensitive a project is, how likely that the land would sell, or see additional development if it were not protected. They look at specific natural attributes of the property, such as if it's habitat for any threatened or endangered species, does it present any salmon restoration potential, contain historic or cultural resources, or is it some sort of working land? They consider how likely the project is to succeed, given all the information that the project components present, and also how, if there's match offered by any of the applications, which is not a requirement but can generate more points. They also look at public access, again, not a requirement, but if a project is going to have public access opportunities, that means it may get more points. So here are where our five applications this year are located on this map of Thurston County. So going from left to right, there is the Kaiser Wetlands project from Olympia Ecosystems in West Olympia, the City Park Expansion sponsored by City of Tenino, the Inspiring Kids Preserve from Capital Land Trust out on Henderson Inlet, and then the Nisqually Middle Reach and Elbow Lake Creek projects from Nisqually Land Trust down adjacent to the Nisqually River. So I'll present them in the order in which they ranked out from the ranking committee. So first project, first ranked project was the Inspiring Kids Preserve from Capital Land Trust. This property includes in total a 10-acre parcel that has been purchased by Capital Land Trust using a bridge, excuse me, a bridge loan. Capital Land Trust will be selling the developed portion and preserving and enhancing the five acres of higher habitat value. The funding request for this project is $350,000, and it's located in Commissioner District 5 on Henderson Inlet adjacent to Johnson Point Road. Property includes marine shoreline, freshwater wetlands, and a seasonal stream that crosses the property, in addition to some forested upland portions. And this is adjacent to Capital Land Trust's 110-acre Inspiring Kids Preserve, which was previously protected in part using Conservation Futures funds, and which provides educational and public access opportunities. If funded, this project is anticipated to close in December of next year. So here are some photos submitted with the project. Highlight a few. In the bottom left here, you can see the property highlighted in green where the cursor is, and adjacent to the surrounding area. And then also you can see other Capital Land Trust owned or managed properties outlined in orange. This is located on the east side of Henderson Inlet. And then the picture on the right shows a portion of the parcel that would be managed for conservation, and that's in green hatching, as well as the remainder of the property. And then the bottom center photo shows an aerial view with a stream that runs across the property. And then the other photos are on the ground and aerial perspectives. Next up is the Elbow Lake Creek project sponsored by Nisqually Land Trust. This is a proposed eight-and-a-half acre acquisition and a funding request of $100,000. The project is located 10 miles southeast of Yelm in Commissioner District 2 off Heiser, Heisner Road. Property features almost 2,000 feet of stream or salmon habitat, and the creek itself is a tributary to the Nisqually River, I think via Powell Creek. It is also forested , a riparian area, and the property is adjacent to Nisqually Land Trust's much larger Powell Creek protected area, including a portion of which was protected using Conservation Futures funds last year. So if funded, this project would close in June of next year. So the top three photos on this slide provide locational context. On the top left, you can see where the project is situated, where the cursor is there in relation to the broader Nisqually watershed. The top center shows a more zoomed-in view where you can see the property in question here outlined in red. And again, on the top right, this piece right here is what's subject to this application, and in addition, you can see what was funded last year. So the two sites on the bottom, or two pictures on the bottom show just on the ground views of the property in question. The third project was the Kaiser Wetlands application from Olympia Ecosystems. This is a 23-acre proposed acquisition on the west side of Olympia in Commissioner District 3. Funding request is $396,000, which is what that slide should say. This property contains forested wetlands. It has salmon habitat restoration potential and may also provide public access and educational opportunities. It's in a region where Olympia Ecosystem is also pursuing other potential purchases. It has purchased land as well. This project, if funded, would close this coming November. I believe they're under a purchase and sale agreement, so there's a bit of a tighter turnaround on this project. So here are some photos for context. The top-left photo marks the proposed property with a red star here on the west side of Olympia. The top-center photo shows the property outlined in purple in context to some other sites that Olympia Ecosystem is pursuing. And then the top-right shows an oblique aerial view. The bottom photo showing some of the on-the-ground conditions, including eber activity on the site. Next project is the Nisqually Middle Reach Protection Project, which is sponsored by Nisqually Land Trust. This is a proposed 3.2 acre acquisition, and the Conservation Futures request is just under $200,000. This site is located pretty close to the other property that Nisqually Land Trust has put in this year, so it's about eight-and-a-half miles southeast of Yelm in Commissioner District 2. Property is on the Nisqually River and features 120 feet of salmon-producing shoreline. In addition, there's a .6 acre gravel bar, and it's also located within, almost entirely within the Nisqually River floodplain and channel migration zone. The site has some habitat restoration potential, as it currently features some structures that I think Nisqually Land Trust is planning to remove, and it's adjacent to other lands protected by Nisqually Land Trust as well. This project, if funded, would close in June of 2025, by June. So here are some photos. Again, the upper-left photo is showing just a broad context of the site in relation to the watershed. The top-right photo shows the subject property outlined in red here. It's this vertical piece adjacent to other land that is protected by Nisqually Land Trust. The photo in the middle is sort of a zoomed-in view of that, with the photos on the bottom showing on-the-ground perspective. And the last project we have today is the City Park Trailhead Expansion from the City of Tenino. This project involves acquisition of a half-acre, and the funding request is $55,000. This property is located immediately on the west end of Tenino City Park in Commissioner District 4, and provides an opportunity to increase access to this other public land that's owned by the city, with plans to ultimately develop a trailhead on the site. This site is right next to a 60-acre piece that the city recently acquired, and is also an expansion to the city park. So this is just part of a much larger project that the city is undertaking. And the estimated closing date for this one is the end of this year. So here are some photos of this last project. The top-left shows the parcel in question in the yellow outline. It's this triangle piece adjacent to the city park here, and then also this newly-acquired 60 acres. The picture on the right shows the site, again in yellow, the site we're talking about, adjacent to a rendering of existing and future improvements that exist on the city park property. And then the bottom-left is an on-the-ground shot. So as I mentioned, these projects ranked out in the order in which they were presented. So here's a summary of the project rankings. And as a reminder, the point values you see here, it's an average score from all the folks on the ranking committee looking at that criteria that we covered at the top of the presentation. So here are some impressions that the ranking committee wanted to provide. In addition to their scores, they appreciated that the Inspiring Kids Preserve, which was the top-ranked project, is well-rounded opportunity for both shoreline restoration and expanded public access. And they liked that the residential use on site will remain, will be sold to a different party, but that it's housing that's going to still be in the housing stock, and also that the more sensitive portions of that site will be preserved. They wanted to note that the Inspiring Kids Preserve has a clear path to providing public access based on work that Capital Land Trust has done in the area on their larger preserve. They've done working on some infrastructure improvements there to actually get expanded public access and be able to get school buses and things like that. So this project, more than some others, has a very clear path to actually expanding public access opportunities. So a few other impressions. The ranking committee appreciated that the Elbow Lake Creek, which was the number-two ranked project, provided some really significant benefits for fish habitat. And overall, they were appreciative that a lot of these projects are immediately adjacent to or right in the vicinity of other protected lands and can add to what's protected on the ground. So getting into options for the Board, the preferred recommendation from the ranking committee was to fund the top two projects, but to leave the specific funding allocation up to the Board as the grand total of those two goes above the $500,000 that the Board typically allocates. And they also suggested that, you know, if there's any funding that any top-ranked projects do not use or do not accept, that that go to, you know, projects that are funded further down, or are ranked further down. I believe that's all I have for you, so I'm happy to answer any questions or revisit any of the slides.
Thank you. So I know we allocate $500,000 a year, but I'm wondering, how much do we have in the fund balance right now for Conservation Futures?
We can research that with our budget team and get back to you if there's an interest of the Board to go beyond the 500.
Yeah.
I would just want to see, as we're engaging in these conversations, like, is there capacity and to know that?
My question as well.
At the end of this year, we anticipate approximately $9 million in fund balance in Conservation Futures.
I know also that has to, HCP plays a role in that, and there's other...
We've already accounted for it.
Okay.
But let us, I think with Ashley, she, we talked briefly, her getting up to speed, let us connect with the budget team. There's been some transition there, transition CPAD team. We can come back quickly with an overview of what the, what the account has, its capacity, and what are other potential things we need to be aware of.
Commissioner Menzinger.
I didn't quite hear Robin's response about the HCP, because, yeah, I mean, the $9 million, but if that's money like we're buying land for the HCP, then it's really not available for funding more projects. I would want to fully fund, I mean, you know, I think, I think historically, the funds had the capacity to, to, you know, stretch a little bit, and certainly if we were going to follow the committee's recommendation, which is my inclination, to be able to fully fund the first two, I think would be a reasonable, unless staff tells me different. But, but I guess my question is, what did Robin say about the $9 million? Does that include money that we've saved toward land acquisition for HCP?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And, and I would want to know, is that on track with our projections? I mean, if we're going to talk about spending some of it, I'd want to know how that fits with, you know, what we projected and what we need, and land prices, I'm sure, are going up. So there's, you know, I, my inclination at this point is to just fully fund the top two as the committee recommended, and then, unless there's...
We can't fund the first two. It would, it would still be $39,000 above. So we would have to decide who's not getting the $39,000.
Unless we determine that there's more available.
Right.
Well, that's what I said. I said, I said, at that scale, I would think that we could do that. But if, you know, going to the next one, for example, I love the next project, obviously, but it's 400,000. That's a totally different conversation than, than adding the 30,000 for the, for the second project.
I, I, of course, am going to want to advocate for the Tenino request. It's a small ask, and I think they completely undersold the fact that it's also connected to 1,100 acres of creekside conservancy land. So it's, there's a contiguous, you know, conservation area that, that includes the city park and creekside conservancy. So there's like, you know, 1,200 acres of, of land that is all publicly accessible, and I'd love to see the opportunity to help expand that. But did you, Robin, did you want to answer Commissioner Menziger's question?
On the broader look, I think the budget team does need to connect with the program team to come up with a solution for the Board.
We can come back. If that's the will of the commission is to look at how much flexibility there is within the fund without upsetting other plans, we can work with the project team or budget team to come back with some scenarios on how we can accomplish that.
Yeah, I would like to know, like, how much flexibility do we have, I guess, to stretch? And there's just, the additional $39,000 to stretch, then, you know, that's, that's it, right? But if there is a little bit wiggle room here and there, just...
Where's the half a million number come from? Is that just that every year, that's what we allocate? Or is there an assessment done based on what we bring in and what's going out, or?
So that's what the Board has been allocating in the past couple of years. There were a number of years where the Board basically froze the fund and did not give out any of this type of award in anticipation of the HCP.
So then the fund grew over that time, and now we've got a...
Yeah, the money in the fund accumulated, and the HCP was settled at an amount much lower than we'd originally anticipated. So it now is a matter of how much does the Board want to set aside for the HCP, and how much do you want to devote to this purpose?
Do we have like a policy on what type of, what we should have in there for reserves? Or is it...
The reserve policy is a two-year. The funding stream for this is property tax. So the funding source is very stable, and we maintain a two-year reserve, or a two-month reserve, not a two-year reserve.
Two years, that's a...
That would be a lot.
I guess another point, as we're kind of discussing, if there is maybe just some flexibility, I'm sure we, you know, the total cost of funding requests is 1.1, almost $1.2 million. That would exceed, you know, it would be an additional $600,000 that the Board would have to allocate to this year. I guess my, as, as we're discussing and seeing where the Board wants to go, also, is there like a minimum that, you know, maybe some of these entities that provided kind of the funding request, right, if they don't receive it, like, is there a minimum that they can receive and still go through with that project? Or if we were to say, okay, we'll give you, you know, Kaiser Wetlands, we'll partially do this, and they're not able to do it, right, then at that point, it just...
Is that information, you could do some research on?
I could reach out to all the applicants and kind of see if there's a minimum viability figure. But yeah, when, when the Board awards funds, it's done conditionally. So if, if you awarded 25% of the ask, if they were not able to bring it all to fruition, then the money would just stay.
Okay, so it's already just conditional then anyways, so it doesn't really, okay, never mind then. I don't want staff to do that additional work if it's already in the contract of being conditional.
But we could find their baseline viability, because to your point, there's two, I think, two questions, our decision points the Board is queuing up. How much is, is in the fund? And what's the flexibility if they wanted to fund more projects on the list? And then two, if they can't get to the full amount, is there a baseline viability for some of those projects to where you would know, well, we can give you this much, but we don't have funding to give it all of you? We can do the research on that and blend both of those decisions into some recommendations for you.
Prior to, I'm sorry, prior to the freezing of the Conservation Futures Fund, what did we, what did that fund balance run at typically?
Let's just take a look. It, it, just looking at the ongoing fund balance, it's informative because of the way these projects close. So the Board would allocate so much for the projects, we'd award them, and then many of them would not close within that fiscal year. So the money rolls forward, or, so we were running a fund balance generally of around, you know, anywhere from $3 to $5 million, which is a lot of money sitting in this fund.
Yeah.
The annual revenue is, let's see, how much did we pull in in recent years? About one and a half million.
So it sounds like there may be also a conversation needs to happen that 500 may be too small of an amount if there's, if it's growing at such a large rate. But I can't, yeah, I can't speak to that until I understand from CPAD's side, everything they're balancing, all the other projects and the land costs. As Commissioner Menziger said, costs go up, so I would want to make sure we're coming up with a responsible plan, but we can look at some of the options.
I don't want to feel like we're hoarding money, because we collect those tax dollars to do public good, and if we're just sitting on them, that, that's not doing public good. Commissioner Menziger, you have your hand up?
Yep. I don't think the point's being adequately made that this is not like treatment sales tax, where, you know, as long as the fund balance is good, we're good to go. We have built into our HCP a, this is one of the funding sources that allows us to set the mitigation fees and not overcharge citizens for their use of property. We balanced that very specifically. Now, we, it was a guesstimation, so, or an estimation, so it may be that we have too much money. It may be that we have not enough money, but the fund balance doesn't really mean anything, because you can always dole out, there's always a list of projects you can dole out money to, but you can't always acquire habitat for endangered species. So, you know, as Josh has explained to us many times, staff is working really hard to acquire the lands, but you may get nothing in one year or two years, and then you may get a huge parcel, and you need seven or eight million dollars because you have an opportunity to acquire a piece of land that's really valuable for our HCP mitigation. That's all balanced over a 30-year time horizon, and it's built into the HCP. So we can't, we can't set that aside as flexibly as we do other funds. It's, it's got some, it's got some, some teeth to it. So I just want to make sure that's really clear, because that was a monumental decision the Board made early on my term, first term, where we had, the fund was frozen when I got on the Board, and nothing was going out to the community, because the county didn't know how much the HCP would truly cost. Once we figured it out and got the project... out and got the project moving, then we were able to say, okay, we think we can allow $500,000 per year out to the community in these types of grants, and still have adequate resources to acquire with the mitigation fees. It was all a balancing act of, how much are we going to charge to, to, to property owners? How much are we going to contribute from the entire community from Conservation Futures? Because that was a tussle. Should this all be borne by property owners? Should the community have a value in, in development and, and stuff? And so it was a balancing act that included $500,000 allocation toward the community, the rest going to either other Conservation Future projects or the HCP, and then HCP mitigation fees. And that, so if we start pulling the threads, we have to make sure we're looking at the whole, the whole circle.
Well said, Commissioner Menzger. I think that's where we need to sit with the operation team to make sure that we're bringing all of that into focus, like you said, the, the entire picture. Ashley, did you want to say anything?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, I appreciate Commissioner Menzger's perspective, and that's why it is, it is critical that we check in with the, the budget team and make sure that the, the overall programmatic objectives of Conservation Futures aligns with what's available in that fund.
We can do that with some of the research we'll do, and we'll be happy to come back to the Board.
Okay.
That information.
Are there any other questions from the Board? Any other comments from staff?
This one, this is an exciting year. I think this is one of the first years in a while that there's a competitive ask.
This is the first year since COVID that it's been, yeah, competitive. We've kind of seen one or two projects a year for the last several years, so it's exciting.
So big nod to our conservation partners in bringing in great projects for the county to consider.
I like seeing the ones that are connected to previous ones, too. That's, that's pretty cool.
It's this team over here that's out on the ground, and we just, we play a small but critical role in the projects that they're trying to get out there. So, yeah.
Good job, team.
Big thanks to them.
All right. Well, moving on. Next on the agenda is Commissioner Items. Commissioner Menzger, do you have anything for Commissioner Items?
I do not. Certainly nothing that can't wait for our check-in at 2:00 P.M.
Okay. Commissioner Mejia, Commissioner Klaus, and I have nothing. Yep. All right, meeting shall be adjourned.